I see it's 4:01, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Select Board for October 5th, 2020 to order. This is a video being recorded by video conference. And I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll for all the Select Board members who are present, myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Oh, good. Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Bates, myself, aye.
Good, thank you. The consent agenda today is one-day liquor license application, the Luke Hill Media Concord Country Club, October 19th, from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m., wine and malt beverage only, and they have submitted a COVID plan, the town accountant warrants, and the minutes to approve for February 10th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that appears to be unanimous, and the chair so declares. Now move to the town manager's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just very briefly, we have a couple of economic items, economic vitality items to report on. We did have another sidewalk sale the weekend before last, and then on Friday evening, we had another drive-in movie out at Barrow Farms. Both, I think, were very successful, and I think we had a good discussion this past week at the Economic Vitality Committee about a whole host of issues, but the focus right now is looking as we head into cooler weather, I mean particularly outdoor dining, but also sidewalk sales, and a couple of things that we're working on is maybe, you know, I think the holiday shopping season is something that, you know, the town has been involved in, insofar as the, when we hang up the greenery and planning the holiday stroll and tree lighting, obviously, I think it's, we're all aware now that that event is not going to happen, the holiday stroll is not going to be happening, so we will be doing lighting probably when we put up the greenery, and we're moving that forward at the request of the business community to have it done in early November. I think, probably, I think nationally, there's a push to start the holiday shopping season earlier to support local businesses, I think, in our, in Massachusetts' case, with limited capacity for stores. You know, there's that line about, there's only, you know, 30 shopping days or whatever until Christmas. You know, that's a bit of a cliche, but when you look at the holiday shopping season, and if you take the assumption of 50% capacity allowed at various businesses and at various retail shops, that means you have half as many days to really do your shopping and supporting local businesses, especially in person. So, starting that season earlier is something that I know the business community is focused on. In fact, one of the local businesses had a flyer that they were circulating, it said October is the new December, and so I think there's very much a mindset that this is a very critical holiday shopping season. So, we're working with them closely on that. Like I said, hanging the greenery, doing the lighting, and making sure, we may do another holiday-themed sidewalk sale in early November as well, so details not to follow. Another sort of community thing is Halloween. We've started to get some questions about that. I think generally, the town, as we might understand, is the town generally does not regulate Halloween. The CDC has issued trick-or-treating guidance, the state has issued its own guidance, and we are discussing internally, obviously, we, it's at the end of the month, obviously, but we, we'll probably be putting something out in terms of plans. I know the Rec Department is discussing a trunk or treat style, like kind of drive-up event like they did for the Easter Bunny back in the springtime. So, for those who may be wondering what's the story for Halloween, we have no, you know, we don't have any plans to change trick-or-treating hours or regulate that, you know, unless, unless the state gives out additional guidance beyond what they've already submitted. So, really, it's going to be for each individual homeowner and, you know, family to decide, you know, to decide whether or not they want to do it, and following CDC and state guidance. So, if I have a further announcement, we'll certainly publicize that as broadly as possible, but as we sit here now, we have no, we have no plans to modify that event. And I think that, I think that's just about it for me, just very quick tonight.
I just wanted to ask a question, Stephen. I understand that, you know, and yes, we have never, you know, taken part in dictating Halloween. I, will we be reminding everybody about the, not only social distancing, but the importance of not having gatherings of more than X number of people, et cetera, et cetera, because trick-or-treating, I mean, as someone who is lucky enough to live in a trick-or-treating neighborhood, it flies in exact opposite of any of the CDC or our own Board of Health's guidance. And I'm, you know, I don't want to be the witch, but I also don't want anybody getting sick afterwards. I mean, not from candy.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, there's been guidance out there that suggests that trick-or-treating is a higher-risk activity. I think that that's something we've seen as well. And I don't want to say it's too soon to really make a call one way or the other, but it's, it's too soon, and I, and like I said, I think we, once, when, and if Rec, the Rec Department decides they're going to, you know, hold their special event and promote it, then I think we would do a broader announcement about guidance for trick-or-treating and Halloween, based on, like I said, the state's and the CDC's guidance. But, like I said, I think it's, you know, people need to assess for themselves, is that really something they should be involved in, whether it's handing out candy or going around and collecting candy. But I don't know that we would, would, you know, cancel Halloween, as it were. I think it's something that people are going to have to decide for themselves.
Stephen, you know, there's, it might not be too soon on news and notices to let people know that, you know, there are guidelines that are published by the state and CDC, and that people should be thinking carefully about how they plan for Halloween. Maybe that's an interim approach, I don't know, just to get people thinking about that?
Yeah, I, we, like I said, we are, I think we're pretty close to issuing an announcement about Halloween. Like I said, we wanted to include the announcement about the Rec events, so people know that there's an alternative, but we certainly can send our news and notices, providing a link to the state's and CDC's guidance. This is a kind of a heads-up. I know some other communities are starting to do that as well, but we're, we're trying to tie the message together, but you're right, Linda, it is a standalone message about, about the safety of trick-or-treating and, you know, trying to balance people's needs to socialize with, you know, the situation we're in and the best practices. So, I will say, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
There is, I did leave off one thing. There is a, a couple of local businesses are getting together and planning an Oktoberfest, like a virtual Oktoberfest, so I think it's packages of food or beer or what have you that you can purchase, and then there'll still be online virtual classes and things like that. So, you know, I think, you know, not, not at the, not promoting one event over another, but I do think there are businesses and community groups who are trying to come up with alternative types of events for the season, so people should really, you know, check them out, if, you know, in, like I said, to support local business, but also try and have a little bit of fun here for Halloween.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager?
So, I did, I did leave off one thing. We do have a, we do have a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday at 2:00, and that agenda should be posted, and people can attend via Zoom.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager? Okay, thank you, Stephen. My remarks really have to do with, again, with the season, I guess, since that's the topic, one of the topics today. You know, as the weather is more variable and turning into cooler faller day, fall days, I want to encourage everyone to continue to take advantage of our parks, our conservation lands, and our trails, because before you know it, the cold, cold weather will be here. And as you do that, please, we just ask that you carefully follow all the postings that accompany these various outdoor venues. So, enjoy it while you can. So, next, I'd like to move to the public hearing for grant of location application from National Grid for 39 Barnes Hill Road. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing? Madam Clerk? Oh, we can't hear you.
Move to open the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll? So, she, looks like you're frozen, Susan. Susan? Okay, I'll call the roll for the public, or Jane, would you like?
Call the roll.
Thank you.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Bates? Myself, Ms. Hotchkiss, aye.
Okay, and, and so we'll, we'll note that she's currently not able to communicate. Appears to, her computer appears to be frozen.
Jeremy, can you help her with that?
Yeah, let's see if I can shoot her an email or call her, see if we can get her on.
Okay. While you're doing that, is there someone from National Grid present to represent this application?
Hi, my name is Mary Mulroney, and I'm here on behalf of National Grid. How are you?
Good, thank you. Go ahead.
The first on the agenda is Barnes Hill Road in Concord, and National Grid respectfully requests to install and maintain approximately 30 feet, more or less, of two-inch gas main in Barnes Hill Road in Concord, from the existing main at House Number 50 Barnes Hill Road, easterly to the end of main near House Number 39. It's in order to provide a gas service to House Number 39 Barnes Hill, Barnes Hill Road.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, what is the, again, I'm new to the board, so I'm curious in here that we're, you know, extending fossil fuel infrastructure in town. What is the basis for our approval or non-approval of such a request?
So, is there someone from the DPW? I think I saw Stephen Dockrun here, or would the town manager like to respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, I can, and certainly Justin's here as well. Generally, because it is, is it, it is in the right-of-way, the town's right-of-way, it needs permission from the Select Board to be granted that location to install the, to install the infrastructure. Justin, did I guess right on that?
Yeah, you're good. It's a, yeah, it's part of Mass. State law. You're right.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, given that there are alternatives, I just wonder why, you know, we are obliged to extend this. I think that you're replacing infrastructure that is, you know, like the second application, I don't have a problem with, but extending infrastructure to new facilities, I just think, well, if we have the opportunity not to do that, it would be good to avoid it.
If I may, so, though, that decision, I'm, I believe, is something that, in fact, this just came out about the Belmont bylaw, that, you know, the Attorney General issued a decision on the bylaw about, about prohibition of extending fossil fuel infrastructure that we were modeling ours, there was a citizen's petition for our timing that was modeled based on it, and that, the decision of whether or not it can be extended is, I think, the Attorney General said that that's a DPU decision, and municipalities trying to say yes or no to whether or not it should be extended is preemptive of the DPU's authority, and so the DPU gets to decide that, that locally, we can just decide whether or not to allow it in the right-of-way, and really, the grounds on which we can make that decision have been kind of curtailed by that decision.
Well, I don't understand why we would be having a public hearing, then.
It's a part of, it's part of state law to have the public hearing.
Right, but if there is no basis upon which we would ever say no, I don't understand. I mean, for example, the, the bylaw that was rejected was about the moratorium on hookups, right, but not on extending infrastructure. So, and this is a, you know, an individual request, and it's not a moratorium, this is just a request to lay down some infrastructure. And again, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with one that replaces existing infrastructure, but extending to new buildings, I guess, I just want to raise this as, do we have to do this, and if so, why?
Matt, if I may, your point is really a good one, and I think before the whole fossil fuel alternatives came into effect, going back several decades, these public hearings were for the town, I believe, to see if there was a public safety issue. So, the police department, the DPW could, you know, opine if there was a public safety issue, I think. Now, you're also raising the issue of fossil fuel, which is relatively new issue to come up at the public hearing. So, the law predates the climate change concerns, I think, and that's why we're in this situation. I don't know if that helps, but just some history.
Well, I also, I think that, you know, had the article, the citizen petition article been rewritten and gone through, it might have been a different, we might have had a, had different grounds to stand on, but we, that didn't, it was withdrawn, and my reading of the materials don't give us this, as to Terry's point, don't give us the right to determine whether or not, even though we have sustainability goals, I don't see that we've, we've enacted fossil fuel goals that would give us the right to object, regardless of whether, as individuals or as Select Board members, we might want to. So...
So...
Well, I just look at the town's sustainability goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and the only way that we'd really be able to achieve this is by, you know, reducing the amount of new emissions put in by new facilities, so...
No argument.
So, I think, just to, just to clarify on what the specific, you know, thing that's being requested and voted on now, on behalf of the Select Board, the Engineering Department and CPW came up with a list of conditions that must be met by National Grid as a, before, as a precursor, as a prerequisite to the grant of the location. Unfortunately, you know, sustainability isn't really one of the things that can be on that list because of the creation of DPU. So, you know, I think if you look at the materials and you look at the conditions about things they have to do while they're working and everything else, that's really what we're voting on, is imposing those conditions on this grant.
Right. Any other comments from the board? Susan, it looks like you're, welcome back.
Thank you. My internet just stopped, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. We're now moving on to a second grant of location application from National Grid for Bedford Court. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Well, did we approve the application? I thought we just opened and closed the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, do we need to ask if the public has any comments? Oh, Linda, you're on mute. Are there any comments from the public on the application for 39 Barnes Hill Road? Carlin?
I'm Reed 83 Witten. What would happen if the Select Board did not approve this extension?
I don't know, Justin or Steve, if you want to do that. I mean, I think the...
I, I think it would be, I would think it would be Mary who would answer, but I would assume that House Number 39 wouldn't be able to get gas. Mary?
Correct, yes. So, they have an existing home built in Concord. They've, the builder, they got permits for building the home, and they chose gas. Keep in mind, we don't solicit gas. People contact us to get the services installed in their home, so they chose to call us and apply for a gas service. So, you'd have a house that would potentially go unheated through the whole winter, and everything inside of it, if it's not heated, probably would be destroyed, I would think.
So, this is a new construction?
My understanding of it is the house has, they've applied for a gas service to, to a new house, yes.
Again, I'm not familiar with 39. And I assume that, I guess this is a Department of Public Works question, or Stephen's question, I assume they'd have the right to appeal?
I'm, I'm going to defer to this one. I would assume that they would, but I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I know if Mary has an answer. I mean, I assume that if we, if the town denied them the opportunity for the connection, but didn't have, you know, solid, you know, legal grounds to make that decision, I assume that there would be some kind of recourse for the, either for the, for the gas company or for the residents, but I, I don't, I don't know that much about utility law.
Tanya?
Just a question, I was...
It's your name and address, please.
Oh, 62 Prescott Road, Tanya Galas. I just had a question about the comment that, or the issue that Matt raised, whether it is based on an existing bylaw or regulation or committee decision, or if it is something that, that is something that the town would like to do in practice or in theory. I, I wasn't quite sure whether Matt was basing his questions or objections on any existing bylaws, or just, just what the town has indicated that it wants to do.
Well, I think we had some remarks from the town manager that clarified that we don't currently have local bylaw or formal grounds to reject this application.
When it comes specifically to sustainability. I mean, there are, just to be, there are, like I said, there are conditions in there that are related to the installation of the work, but when it comes to denying it because it does not, it is not in conformance with the town's well-publicized and well-developed sustainability goals, the DPU recently said that that's not, that that's a, that the DPU, the Attorney General recently ruled that that is a DPU authority on the Belmont bylaw case. Brookline? Brookline, I think.
Thanks. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so I prematurely had closed the public hearing, so I will do that now. Can I hear a motion again, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Is there any other further conversation or discussion from the board? Okay, if not, I'll ask the clerk to make a motion.
Move to approve the grant of location application from National Grid for the installation and maintenance of approximately 30 feet of a new two-inch CS gas main at 39 Barnes Hill Road, with conditions as outlined in the memo from Concord Public Works dated September 17th, 2020.
Okay, do I hear, second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that was a vote of four in favor and one opposed, and the chair so declares. Okay, now, ready to move on to the next public hearing, grant of location application from National Grid for Bedford Court. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous, and I so declare. So, does the board have any comments on this particular application?
Well, I'd like to hear the reasoning for it. I, I saw the application, but, you know, I assume this is being replaced to improve safety, reduce leaks. I would like to know a little more.
Okay, would the National Grid representative please respond?
Sure. This is, this is to comply with the request from the town of Concord. They're doing road reclamation, and National Grid likes to work with the towns, and if they can, prior to notification that your roads are going to be disturbed and redone, we try to get new main in there, especially if the main is old, so that it will eliminate leaks in the future and us having to go into the ground and, you know, make a patch, and it's, it's, you know, we try to do it ahead of time, so that that doesn't happen. So, that's what this is. It's due to Concord's road reclamation, their project, and we'd like to replace about 620 feet of, replacing it with plastic, and we're taking out a 1930 coated steel pipe.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? So, this particular application also has been reviewed by the Department of Public Works Engineering, and in consultation with several other departments, and there are a list of conditions that have been provided. So, are there any comments from the public? All right, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion for that?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Any further discussion from the board on this application? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion on this item.
Move to approve the grant of location application from National Grid for the relay of approximately 620 feet of a two-inch CS gas main with 620 feet of two-inch PL on Bedford Court, with conditions as outlined in the memo from Concord Public Works dated September 4th, 2020.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That appears to be unanimous, and, and I will so declare. And thank you to everyone who was present for, for these two items. All right.
National Grid and myself, thanks you for your time. And we have two more upcoming, but I don't think they're on this agenda. I'm sure they're going to be scheduled shortly.
All right, thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Right. The next item is a request to change Precinct One polling location. Kari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here this afternoon to request the change of Precinct One's polling location from 141 Kaiser Road to the townhouse at 22 Monument Square in the hearing room. We anticipate a higher turnout for the presidential election, and with the social distancing requirements and, and other items such as sanitizing the, the voting booths between voter use, we anticipate that we are not going to have enough space for voters and staff. The staff that we need are the clerk and warden to help deal with voting issues that come up. We will have two checkers. We will need to have a ballot box attendant, and we will need to have someone sanitizing the voting booths in addition to having a greeter who helps direct the voters into the polling place. There's also one entrance and exit, and the hallway is, because people would be waiting in line, the hallway is narrow. It is, it is ADA width. So it, it does meet the minimum width requirements, but we would anticipate having a fair amount of people waiting in line. There is another exit, another door out of the conference room at Kaiser Road, but it's not ADA accessible. So we can't really use that as an exit. So the, the hearing room has been used successfully for early voting, and the setup is similar to the Election Day. We will have early voting from October 17th until the 30th. So we will not have, obviously, early voting will have ended by the time the in-person voting for Election Day begins. So we would be able to just leave, leave that location setup as a polling place. So last Thursday, fellow registrar Wendy McNally and I conducted a site access survey that's required by state law, and that reviews the paths of travel, handicap parking, accessible voting equipment, and access to the polling place. And we found that the townhouse complies to all of those requirements. The, the ADA coordinator at the Elections Division reviewed the form and approved it, and I have submitted a report that requests for your vote this afternoon so that I can vote, notify voters about the polling location change.
Okay.
I've also contacted, I'm sorry, I've also contacted the Republican and Democratic Town Committee Chairs. I've heard back from the Republican Town Committee Chair, and he did not have a problem with this change as long as we provide adequate notice to voters. I've also contacted the Commission on Disability, and they are okay with the change, and I will be attending their meeting later this week to talk about the, the changes. The police chief has approved adding two temporary handicap spaces, parking spaces in front of the townhouse, and will add one behind the townhouse as well. So that's on level access to the entrance. Sorry, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, Kari, I'm thinking about the, the hearing room, and, and I know that the, the main entrance is ADA accessible, but the, the other exit, I assume that's not, correct?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, in other words, there's only one entrance and exit that would be ADA accessible be, is on the second floor. And the other exit, my understanding, would go downstairs. Is there another elevator? I'm just trying to think about.
No, there's, so what we do for early voting and, and, you know, early voting, we can have a much higher turnout in one day than we would at a polling place, because that's across all the precincts. So we have, we have a flow established so that people would enter, check in to the left, they would vote, they would check out to the right, and then they would exit. So there's an elevator, the elevator can only be used by one person at a time. It's the same situation for early voting. But we didn't, for the primary, we didn't have any issues at all with that.
Jane, if I can, if I can clarify, the, I don't know if you meant entering a building or entering the hearing room, but people can come in and out of the front door if they don't need assistance. On the side door, there's a lift there that gets someone who has mobility issues up the stairs essentially, and then they can use the elevator. But then people who don't need that can come in and out of the front door and then use the stairs as normal.
Any other questions from the board?
I just wanted to say, although I'm in favor of this, that I was impressed at the last town election, just combining all precincts into one polling place was incredibly efficient and popular with voters. Now, I realize that that school was not in session at that time, so that made it a lot simpler. But, gosh, you know, opportunities to do that in the future would really be appreciated, I think, just from the use of polling workers, even campaign workers and everybody else. It seemed quite convenient and effective.
I can't tell you how much we would love to have all the precincts in one polling location. But that's, it's a matter of, you know, the space and availability. But when we can in the future, we will. With your permission, of course, because it's all up to you.
So Carrie, how quickly would the public notification of this occur?
We will send out the notice as soon as we can after we have your approval to do so.
And that will go to all voters?
That, yes. That will be a townwide mailing. It's an opportunity to also remind people of the various dates for early voting, to remind people that, you know, for, for people voting by mail, that the ballot has to be returned to the town clerk's office and not to, to deliver it to the polls. So we have all kinds of opportunities. But, so one side of the page would be specifically dedicated to notice of the polling locations on Election Day, highlighting the, the polling location change. And if the town manager is, is able to do some kind of a robo-call, that would be wonderful as well. Just to, to remind people that voting on Election Day is in person at, at the polling locations that Precinct One has changed, and that voting early is not at the polling locations. So it's, there's, there, there are a lot of dates and locations to remember.
Kari, so this mailing goes out to all households, I think.
Yes.
So does it list all the different locations?
Yes.
Okay, good, because there's a lot of confusion. I know somebody was still going to the high school at the last election, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we'll definitely do a, a, a reverse, a code red message. We'll now talk about when the optimum time to do that is, you know, close enough to the election where the message doesn't get lost, but far enough out to encapsulate early voting. So we'll work on that. But I think that's a good use of the system.
Okay, good. Public comment is mostly scheduled for the end of this meeting, but while Kari is here and before we take a vote on this, are there any comments from the public on this particular topic? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to ask the clerk to make a motion.
Move to approve the November 3 presidential election polling location change for Precinct One from 141 Kaiser Road to the hearing room in the townhouse at 22 Monument Square.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
Thank you very much.
That is unanimous, and the chair so declares. Thank you, Kari, and good luck with.
Thank you.
All that's coming up.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the annual town meeting calendar. The town moderator, based on our feedback that, our discussion last meeting and the feedback that I gave to the town moderator, she did draft a second planning calendar for FY '21 for our discussion purposes. I think this has also been viewed by key people such as the superintendent of schools and, and the town manager and others. And I think there's general concurrence that this calendar will work. So is there any further comment from anyone? Stephen?
It just, I know Matt mentioned this at the last meeting, but I did, we did review this at SMT today, and I just, I think everyone's kind of mindful of high school graduations. I think there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding what that's going to look like in the springtime, but that's the only, I think we have to commit to a calendar, but I just want to put down a, an early pin in the idea that high school graduations could have an impact on people's ability to attend, is all.
Yes, well, that was taken into account with this redraft, at least for the existing graduation date that's on the board. So this was postponed for an additional week to avoid that.
Well, I'm saying in other, in other towns around us and staff, is all.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, we've got to land somewhere, and we've, we've done our best to try to anticipate all the various variables that could impact this. So I think if I don't hear any additional comment, I'd like to hear a motion to approve this calendar. For annual town meeting, do I, let me just further comment that this currently does not include the date for town caucus and town election. So what I'm asking for right now is approval for all the rest of the dates that are on this calendar.
Move to approve the dates that are on the discussion draft calendar for 2021 Annual Town Meeting.
And that discussion calendar is dated October 1st, 2020, just so we all talking about the same thing.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Moving on to the Select Board goals. We're now looking at, and talking about the draft of the goals that we began talking about in previous meetings. We all provided feedback for that at our last, or some feedback for that at our last meeting. And so I'd like to hear today some additional comments as we look at trying to finalize this document. So I'll, I'll start, if I may, and just comment that one of the comments I heard last time was whether or not we should have an entire section devoted to COVID, or whether we should integrate it into the goals. I took the approach of adding a specific section after goals and objectives, and I'll just read these for the sake of the public. Prioritize, prioritize public health and public safety and protecting Concord citizens and town employees during the pandemic period. Implement and monitor evolving state and federal regulations as they impact municipal operations and municipal guidance for community-wide response. Acknowledge the flexibility required to traditional schedules and procedures to safely respond to the impact of COVID-19 realities on matters before the Select Board and town, taking extra care to communications between and among all of us in Concord citizens. And encourage town employees and committee volunteers to be mindful of their well-being as they deal with multiple personal and professional stresses related to delivering the highest level of municipal service to Concord citizens and to the functions of Concord's town government. And there may be other items in that section. Teri?
Yes, I have two items that I would like to put in this section. One is work with town moderator to produce a safe, effective, and transparent town meeting during the COVID pandemic. And the other is support the Economic Vitality Committee and business groups to find creative ways to assist businesses during the COVID pandemic. And also, up in the section above this, in the values and guiding principles, I would like to add another value that would be called something like public health and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, this is Jane, and I, I would like to, first of all, I think it's, I welcome the idea of having a specific call-out because I'm hoping that at some point we can put it away. So it's not a permanent part of the board's goals until, you know, it's permanent until we don't need it to be. But I would want to reflect, in, in our values and guiding principles, and I like that Teri has brought up public health and safety and economic resilience, I also think that, you know, continued reflection, and I didn't, I didn't put this in my draft, but continued reflection of the relationship between the, the town government and the schools, because especially in, in this space, and I don't know whether that belongs in our goals and objectives, or whether we put that in the specific to COVID-19. But this is an area where I think we have to call out that balance, just as we call out the economic resilience and the economic vitality issues that, you know, that are heightened by the pandemic. So are many of the, so are many of the, the impacts of school-aged families and school-aged children.
Okay, good. Since, so looking at the process values and principles, and this section is, I'm proposing it, are there any other comments on this particular section, sections?
Well, I just, I think of goals as being temporal by nature, and so when, you know, this health and safety, I think it sounds like a great category under which these COVID goals hopefully will get dispatched within this year, and perhaps be replaced by other, you know, public health and safety goals in the future. I, that's actually one of the difficulties I had in reviewing the goals, that there seemed to be a combination of kind of longstanding Select Board responsibilities mixed with goals, you know, that are on an annual, like either we achieve them or not in a year. And so I, I didn't know really how to parse those. I left those alone. But, you know, at least in my professional life, we, we try to have goals that we can either at the end of the year say, yes, we got them done, or we didn't, you know, and, and can measure that.
So your point's well taken, Matt. You know, this is really a combination, as you can see, of values and some longstanding principles and, and intermixing it with tasks, some of which, you know, we are able to say, yes, we completed that task discreetly, some of them we can't.
Linda? I'm sorry.
Just to that point, under, if we're just going to focus on values and guiding principles, because Matt, I think your fresh eyes are very welcome on this document. I mean, it, it tends to, it has a ebb and flow characteristic to it. But I did want to, actually, interestingly, harkening back to an earlier conversation we were having at this meeting, I thought it was time to start to insert, both based on our long-range plan work and also on our, our principles, sustainable, sustainability and the reduction of carbon emissions as well into our guiding principles, not just as a standalone. as well into our guiding principles, not just as a standalone, but in the other places in which it would be reflected, which is why I suggested under infrastructure, sustainable, sufficient, well-maintained, reliable infrastructure. It might seem like a repeat of words, but I think the more times that we, we place that term of art into our, into all of our, our guiding principles, the better.
I'm going to Sorry, yeah?
Yes, I just, I did take, actually take a, a try at the values and guy. And Matt had mentioned at the last meeting, public health, and I think Teri mentioned economic vitality, I mean, Matt mentioned the both as a part of the guiding values. So the one thing I did is I took a, a try at writing those as, as values to kind of mirror the language above them and the other values. And I'm happy to share those with the board.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay. I'm going to move to the effective governance, board organization and communication section. Matt, I think you had some comments here to me.
Well, yeah, I thought that, for example, the, the first one was really about the town manager's first year, so I felt like that had been completed. So I struck that. Then, of course, the second one is, is good. So one of those longstanding ones, but, you know, what would be great is over time, if we can try to enumerate the goals from that plan that we expect to actually address this year. And I hope to have done a little bit of that in the proposals that I, I came up with. And then, I don't know if you want me to go through everything, but it was, I, I thought that we talked about the increasing
This particular would be helpful, yeah, right now.
It, this, just the section, sure. So the, the idea about the open and transparent government, I thought that there were two things there. One is that I think that the charter of the PEG Access Advisory Committee may need a little sharpening. And so I thought that we could address that. Because, you know, the nature of video production has really changed in this last year. Our meetings are typically remote, and I don't know if that'll continue, but there certainly is a different role that, that committee is playing. And then to improve the citizen communications with that citizen correspondence policy that we have a draft of, I'd hope that we can bring that to a conclusion. I also put in a wish list that I personally have. I don't know if the rest of the board concurs, but what I, one thing I miss are regular town manager reports. And I particularly believe that as we have less coverage from our town's newspaper, that, you know, direct communications could be more valuable. And so I, I wanted to throw that out there. And then I felt like the green line, green card process was not done, so I just left that in place for future goal. It still needs work. The town library committee, library agreement was done. But then I also felt that we haven't really addressed the wireless communications issues and that those still are hanging out there. I mean, we had heard that there weren't imminent plans, but I still believe that because the work is done in the right way, that without some policy guidance from us, that we'll just get whatever comes. So I, I just feel like we need to do something there. And I put that under communication because it's communications and governance, but I didn't really know where else to put it.
Okay. Can I just ask you what you mean by direct reports from the town manager? Just so we all know what we're talking about here?
Well, it's just that the, the town manager publishing a, a kind of outward-facing, a public-facing document, right? Rather than relying upon our media organizations to report on what the town manager is doing. That's what it's really getting at.
Okay.
So in the past, we've had a fairly regular and comprehensive town manager's report published that the public could review.
Correct. All right. Any other board comments on this particular section? Thank you for those comments, ma'am. Any other, Teri?
Yes, I agree with a lot of Matt's comments. And a few other ones are, number three, we have ceded those two committees, but we need to seat the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. And that might not be the exact right wording of that committee, but it's the one that we just proved at this meeting.
Correct. I think their technical name is Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you.
But I knew what you were talking about.
And then the one about the town manager's report. I think, Steven, when you first came to us, you were submitting your town manager report in writing. And I, I think that, that would be basically, I think, what Matt's referring to. I'm not sure, but that's, that's what I think Matt means.
Yeah, I, I think he saw, I mean, we, we did have a town manager's report that got posted to the website, I think semi, semi-regularly. And I think, well, let me say this. I think, you know, connecting the idea of what the local press is printing and, and what I, I don't want, I want to kind of sever those ideas as
That's fine.
Because it's, that's not, I'm, you know, that's not what we're trying
Not becoming a publication, no, but I just providing clear information, that's
Right, I, I think one of the things that, and I, I want to say before you get on the board, we talked about this, and one of the things that I've observed in my time here is that we get a lot more mileage in terms of, you know, I can put together a newsletter or something like that. And I think those had been done in the past, but the lead rate is very low. And we've gotten a lot more mileage out of news and notices, almost like, hey, and I got it, God help me for saying this, but almost Twitterizing the town manager's report and sending him out as news and notices in, in a serial way instead of one newsletter once a month. And I think the community is, the feedback I've gotten is that, that people have become, that the information has been more timely in that way. Now, people have to go click on a link to get more details, but we have found that that is, we get more, like I said, you know, more feedback from that approach. You know, I think we're always looking for better ways to communicate with the public and keep people informed, but we, I've tended towards news and notice, news and notices as the more effective way to get people real-time information. But, you know, like I said, we're, there's, I'm sure there's a better way to do it. And in terms of the memos on town, on the town manager, on like my town manager's updates, those, those were in writing. I will say, having, one of the things that have, moving to virtual meetings, especially with SMT virtual meetings, and not having the in-person interaction I have, I had, while, while we're still generating a lot of content, getting all that content in place and producing a written, you know, one or two-page memo is something that has suffered as a result of this new normal work environment. I acknowledge that, and that's something that I, I have a personal goal to return to the, the written town manager's reports. It's just, it's just been, that, that part's been a struggle.
Okay. If, if I can continue, I had a few more in this section.
Okay.
Okay, so in the green card, it was number seven, now it's number eight. I kind of reworded it. Well, I'll just read it, and it may need to be worded some more, but I think we need to do some work in this area, definitely. Because our volunteers are really precious, and we don't have enough of them, and we're always trying to recruit. We need to do a much better job on recruiting and acknowledging people when they do volunteer. So I wrote streamline the online green card process. And that's partly because I'm not sure, Jeremy, if all of the old paper cards are online now or they're out of date. I'm not really sure where we're at with that. Anyway, streamline the online green card process to encourage new and diverse citizen volunteers. This diverse thing came up in a couple of my liaison groups. Ensure that committee chairs are notified when someone volunteers. This, I think Jeremy has been doing lately, and it's been really good. And that all volunteers are acknowledged for their willingness to serve. I think acknowledgement they were getting was a real form letter that went into spam, and I'm not sure if that has been improved. And then finally, I wrote those that are not selected should be encouraged to apply for a different committee. So I don't think that this wording is perfect, but it addresses some of the issues that we're having recruiting volunteers for, for these committees. And I think we should definitely do some work there. And then on the last two things, we've completed the updated review of the library agreement, but we are supposed to review any other public-private partnerships that come up. So I don't know which ones are coming up. I think we need to get a list of what's coming up and then review it. And finally, on the wireless communication policy. I think that's a really good idea, Matt, but I don't know enough about it. Like, we need a little bit more wording there, some more direction, like what the select board to do in this area?
Oh, we would have to hire a consultant, absolutely.
Okay. To figure out what we're supposed to be doing?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yeah.
Are we talking like cell service or 5G?
It, it would be 5G is where new infrastructure is likely to be built and in the right way. Yeah.
Okay.
But we also need improvement in the current cell service.
For sure, but that's probably how it would be delivered in the end.
Well, I think we need to spell out this goal because there's a lot that I don't understand about it. And we need to really clarify what we want to do with this, even if it's hire a consultant, okay, and figure out what
Yeah, I think Matt's point about a consultant first is, is why, our wise words, having been on the board while we have wrestled with the huge hole we have in Concord Center, the public health and safety issues related to it, and still not been able to achieve a cell tower that would, that would serve the needs. Going to 5G is unlikely to be a smooth, I don't see that being a smooth sale either. Not that, not that I'm saying we won't do it. I'm just saying we're going to need wisdom that I certainly don't claim to have.
And Jane, to your point, as you're, as you're referencing, the board has already convened several times on this topic, trying to address it with no immediate result. So, okay. All right, Matt, you may want to put a few more words to that. Otherwise, we'll start with consultant. Susan?
I just wanted to say how, how much I appreciate everybody making edits to this document and how much real convergence there is on, from a lot of the voices. But I do want to say that I agree that the communications, the wireless, 5G, whatever it is, that did come up a number of times last, in the past year at the meetings. And so I think it should rise up on the list, just, it should be on the list along with the other goals.
Okay, good. All right, I'm going to move to the next section on financial stability, if there aren't any other points on that one. Any additions there that people want to comment on?
Linda?
Yes.
I took a stab at rewriting number three, which I thought was a little unclear. And somebody else wrote, we need to reword this. So my wording now says, because, yes, we do need to continue this goal. Somebody else asked that. Support the capital planning task force to develop a more effective, longer-run method for prioritizing and publicizing large capital needs of the town and the schools, including timetables, cost estimates, and environmental impacts.
Yeah, so it's generally the concept you've just tweaked the words a little bit for understanding.
Right, and we do hope to finish it this year, the way our charge is set up. We're supposed to finish by June 30th.
All right. The next section is balance equity and diversity. Are there additions or comments there? So I've added, continue to work with, uh, uh, number one. Since that item isn't finished, I've just put continue to work with legislative representatives to file special legislation for ATM FY19, Articles 25 and 26, related to affordable housing initiatives. And then I've added work with legislative representatives to file special legislation for the annual town meeting FY20, Article 15, senior means tested property tax exception. So in other words, follow-up to the town meeting. Is there anything else that people picked up in this particular section?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that while the housing production plan won't be starting until, towards the end of the fiscal year, I thought that we should try to provide some input to kind of its goals. So I think in the past, we, we've kind of tried to achieve the most units for the least price or something. What we really, I think, have maybe to gain here is better equity and diversity in our community through, you know, housing diversity as well. So I'm just hoping that we can provide that as input as they launch this process to kind of guide where that, we want that report to go. So that's why I added that. Then I added, I, I removed the goal before regarding the police department and welcoming community, because I, while I strongly agree with that goal, I think that it needs to be generalized, just considering the events of this past year throughout the nation, that really, and, and also the statements of Chief O'Connor, that I just wanted, I, in fact, I, I took some of the wording from his press release just to say that we should support their ongoing implementation of best policing practices that treat all people with dignity and respect, enhance reporting and monitoring, and that's kind of a reference to the body cam that's being implemented. And of course, since this is a launch year for that, I think that we need to provide, you know, oversight or, and then de-escalate file volatile solutions whenever possible. So again, this is really just encapsulating what the chief has already stated as principles. But then I added a second one related to policing. And, and that is, again, in response to, I think, questions from the public and, and just in national dialogue on really the use of the police. And, and so really, is there a way that we could look at in Concord, you know, how the police are delivering social services in different capacities as school resource officers and in other capacities? I, you know, we may very well conclude that, yeah, we're doing just the right things. But I think that it is worth having a look, just given, again, just the, the national dialogue is on this issue.
Matt, I, I think that's really well stated. And, and I, I agree. I think it comes, it comes loud and clear through our need to communicate what we are doing so that, so that when people have questions, they have a reference point. There's, there's some kind of data or screen available because, you know, it's very easy to be reactive in the, in this particular timeframe. So I, I salute you for that, thank you. I, I added badly because it's, we're still working through exactly how to describe the town manager's transportation advisory committee. But I, in number two, where we talk about continue to work with business sector to establish a retail diversity support system, including intra and inter-town transportation, that was just one segment of our transportation goals. And that was a specific need of supplying better transportation to employees of many of our retail establishments. But I, I look at, from a balance equity and diversity, part of this is also creating balance equity and diversity of types of transportation inside of Concord. And I think we've seen that in, in a lot of the responses to and excitement around different forms of transportation and making sure that we are reflecting that in the way we do our, we set our goals for transportation. And some of, some of what goes on in this space, as, as the town manager has consistently described, is very much of a, a expert. is very much of a, a expert, a professional space. But some of it is also making sure that that professional implementation reflects what Concord citizens want to see in the roads that, you know, Concord itself maintains. Not every road can we do that with, not every bike path. But those that we can, and I'm just using a bike path or every trail, those that we can, we want to, we want to reference or reflect.
Jane, I hear your comments. Can you just define for me the words here? To establish retail diversity support systems? So support systems, I understand, but establish retail diversity support systems?
Again, yeah, those are old words. Those were not, I'm not going to take credit or cast aspersions.
I just want to get your meaning, what you really
What that, that came out of a need to find a way that would bring some of the folks who work in the restaurants, in the different retail establishments in Concord, to Concord. We have a very poor inter and intra transportation system.
Okay, so I, yeah, I've got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, good. Any other comments or suggestions in this section? No, Steven?
Yeah, I just want to, I think, I think goals five and six, I know, and I have heard Chief O'Connor talk about all of the things you say there in goal five. And I think supporting the police department's effort to do that is wholly appropriate. I just think on, on, on number six, I think, you know, there's things that we want to accomplish as a community. But I want to be mindful of what is, you know, what would be an operational thing that we would do to fulfill a, a goal of the community and not be prescriptive about it in terms of, you know, what is really kind of an operational thing that we would need to go through to fulfill a broad policy goal of the select board. And I just, I just want to make that distinction because I just, sometimes it can get a little murky. And so I just, I just wanted to kind of point that on our six, I'm not sure being as specific as that is where I think is not the aspirational side of it, that I completely understand what you're trying to do. I'm just not sure that that being as specific as saying evaluating efficacy costs and appropriate conditions for delivering social services and a lot of that is mandates. You know, how we do it and what the community expects of our police department are certainly things that should be reflected in the goals. But I think that that, that may be a little too, a little too detailed.
What I was thinking of was a comparison of what we do versus pure towns. You know, the staffing, the services provided. And then also, yeah, what are the regulations that make it that we have these personnel doing these sorts of tasks? That, you know, and then how is, what is the money that we spend? And then what are Concord's outcomes? Those are the kinds of things that if we had that information and were able to point to it, that I think that, you know, everybody would feel good about how we work with our police and other departments within the town.
I just, I think there's a way, I think there's a way to capture that more clearly.
Okay, any other comments on this particular section? If not, I'm going to
Linda?
Yes.
I'm not sure what section this goes in, but good catch that you put in Article 15. And it reminded me that we also have to put in something about Article 16, the TIF, and Article 50, the license, one day liquor license. And so 16 might go in this section, but I don't know where the liquor license legislation would go.
Yep, thank you. Okay, the natural resources section. Any comments, additional comments there?
Yeah, I added something, I mean, it wasn't just natural resources, but it was also historic and cultural heritage. And so there, I just wanted to make note of the, you know, launching the planning for the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution because I do think that it's a long term process, that this is the year to get going on it. And in fact, regional efforts have already begun. And, you know, it's going to be the event that they make if we don't make it. So I think that, and we actually also need to decide what we want it to stand for. I think that, you know, the American Revolution is viewed in a lot of different contexts. And, you know, Concord needs to assert what we think it is.
Well, we have a committee that's formed, correct?
But is it seated? I haven't heard that it's met. And it
Right, we haven't appointed the people to the committee and we don't have a select board liaison.
So I think we really do need to launch this. I don't think it's really launched.
Yeah, that's correct.
Linda, can I make a comment about, sorry?
Go ahead.
About number three?
Yes.
I, I think in terms of White Pond and Jarrow, I do think that we have, you know, developed plans for those projects that are the implementation of the recommendations for the recreational long term protection of the land and the ecosystems. But the projects themselves aren't complete. And so maybe if we wanted to wordsmith that, something about complete the projects that are based on the recommendations or something like that. Because I do want to reflect that those projects are ongoing.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, I had stuck that it was completed, but indeed, just that that's complete doesn't mean that we're all done with work in those areas.
No, I know Kate Hodges doesn't feel like she's all done with them.
No, and I think it's very also important to continue to connect the two because while there'll be different plans, they're both arms of the recreation, they're, they're both going to be under the wing of town recreation responsibilities.
And quite honestly, if we were going to change, and I'm sorry, I know these are select board goals, but based on recent conversations, I think it's, it should be complete the projects and plan for law, for maintenance and stewardship. I know that law came up about White Pond over the summer. I think as Jarrow evolves as a recreational amenity, I think similar issues will probably materialize, especially if, I mean, I don't think that would be done if we're not in a pandemic, but something about ongoing stewardship as well.
Does anyone else have some additions for this section, Terry? And then I would like to add one.
Okay, I think one of the ones I'm going to say might be the one you want to add, which is number six. I like your wording, Linda, continue to seek resolution for public access and use of Esteban Woods. I think that's really good wording. And the other one that I want to change the wording on is number four. It only talks about dog friendly access. I think we need people and dog access.
Friendly access.
Right, and that we need to balance people and the dogs with the ecosystem protection.
The, number one, where it talks about encouraging collaboration among town departments on planning priorities, conservation and the acquisition of land to preserve Concord's rural agricultural culture. I have no difficulty with that, except that for me, it, I really think we need a larger context here. And that is, I see a need for integrated and acquisition, an integrated land acquisition plan that addresses municipal and community priorities with intentional attention given to balance equity and diversity. And, you know, this has come up before related to the long range plan. And so I just, if there's general agreement with that, it may not stay in this section, but it may, because there may not be another logical place for this to go.
I'm curious about it because while we periodically do have, you know, land acquisition that we pursue for a variety of reasons, that, you know, right now with the 2229 Main Street site kind of coming up, as well as the Peabody School site eventually coming up, it seems like we have some, you know, public accessible lands that are going to be coming and, you know, available. And I just didn't know that we had kind of a pent up demand for this at the moment.
You're questioning whether we do or don't?
I didn't think that we did have a pent up demand to do further land acquisition at this time. Occasionally, opportunistically, something will show up, you know, for conservation purposes, let's say. But I didn't know that for municipal purposes, we're looking to acquire more land right now. I guess, you know, I may just not be aware.
So I, you know, this is a case where there maybe needs to be some word smoothing with the concept that I was trying to, to capture here. It's not only an integrated land acquisition plan, but, but a priority plan for land that does become available, whether we're acquiring or not, or using existing municipal land that becomes available.
Okay, and to some degree, the housing production plan will deal with that, but not, not fully, not when it's for other kinds of facilities or for conservation.
Or for conservation or, yeah, open space or whatever it might be, yeah.
We do have
And I like Linda's wording because the select boards take the lead on coordinating all the other committees. But the wording that we have in there now looks more like something the town manager would do. Encourage collaboration among town departments, that's on the town manager level. So I think these two examples that we just talked about, the Peabody School and the 2229 Main Street, I think select board does need to need, I like the term you use, Linda, integrated land acquisition plan. I think that's appropriate.
But as, you know, as Matt pointed out, that there's, there's, I've missed the identifying priorities for available land, identifying our town priorities. I think the planning department has some ideas and, but so may a whole host of other departments and, and
We may have just as much musical chairs to play with land as we do acquisition to do.
Exactly.
So even the, the creation of the priority list should be one of our goals.
Yeah, I guess that's, yeah.
Wait, wait, can I just jump in on that?
Sure.
We did, there is actually, so it's completed. We have a, we had a pretty comprehensive facilities assessment done by TBA Architects and that we got, that was presented to the board, I think, last fall. And so there's a really, there's a lot of analysis about town facilities and sites that, you know, we could certainly go look at. I mean, I will tell you that those things change frequently depending on availability and time and priority shift. But, you know, it talks a lot about the existing state of affairs for town facilities and does look at potential sites. So we do have that report kind of in hand. I know it got presented and, you know, we kind of got away from it, got away from it, but it is
Yeah, but I think that Linda's at the next level up where there's municipal facilities, there are recreation, there's conservation, and then there's housing. And these are all potential uses and, you know, we may have for land. So I guess, yeah, an integrated view is probably what you're looking for.
Right, right. Okay. Any additional things that aren't captured by some of the sections we've already talked about? I think, Matt, you
Yeah, I proposed some stuff for this economic vitality section. So I thought that we needed to do something that just acknowledges that we are already promoting town events and commercial activity in the village business districts to ensure their success. And maybe there's something more we could do. Secondly, I think that this Thorough Depot Business District zoning and development process is, you know, going to be moving ahead this year. So we have potentially rolled there. And then I'll be talking more in the liaison report, but the Nuclear Metal StarMet site, they will be publishing their report. And so we would want to review and provide feedback to that in this, toward the end of this fiscal year.
Any other comments? Terry?
We skipped a section, which is the regional and state interests. I just have a few comments on that. And number two, we should add the MBTA. Number five, about the Minuteman High School building project, I think that's completed. I think we don't really want to put that in unless we just want to say that we want to support the ongoing efforts of the Minuteman School. And number six, I'm thinking that's in the wrong section. It says identify opportunities for Congress to cultural districts and coordinate efforts across sectors and locations. I'm thinking that should either go in the new economic vitality section or back in the Concord unique character, historic and cultural section. It doesn't belong in regional and state. And I also added into it a sentence that kind of ties in with what Matt just said. And I don't think we need it twice, but I put in implement opportunities for increased access such as cross town connect and the Asabet River Pedestrian Bridge. So anyway, I think that that number six gets, should get moved to where it belongs.
Yeah, Terry, I think it was there primarily because of its, the access to funding.
Right.
The state pool, but I don't disagree that from a Concord's focus perspective, it's not where it's coming from.
Yeah.
And I would just say, again, cross town connect, I continue to lump into transportation. And that's why transportation is such an umbrella.
Right, but as you said before, if it exists in several places in the document, that might give extra emphasis, which is, yeah. I think we were just about to make a great breakthrough on transportation right before COVID hit. So hopefully we can get back to it this year.
Yeah. So this has been a productive conversation. All of the comments that have been added, I assume are in drafts that you've already given to me. And if not, that would be helpful. So thank you, everyone. That was very productive and now just putting it all together. But we're, we're almost there.
So what is our, the process, Linda? Are you going to try and put it together?
Excuse me?
I'm wondering what the process is going forward with this.
Yeah, I will give a crack at trying to put this together with all the comments that you've provided. And then we'll have an opportunity to look at it next week, but hopefully put this at least temporarily to bed. And then we should come prepared next time to now look at the section in the long range plan that we've talked about previously that we need to look at in terms of the action items and looking at the near term action items and anything where the select board is called out.
Yeah, there are surprisingly few.
Linda?
Yes.
In terms of next steps, I think we're, SMT is going to have a goal setting session as well based on the original document circulated and the comments we're receiving from the board tonight will come up with our own offer of feedback, if that would be okay?
Sure, that'll be helpful. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to committee. Thank you again, everyone. That was very helpful. Committee nominations. Susan? Well, the
I don't see her. She, her internet may have dropped again.
So Jane, do you have them in front of you or?
Hang on, let me just pull them up, let me just pull up that piece and I will do it.
If not, I think I can find it.
Move to nominate Jennifer
Ubaldino.
Ubaldino, thank you, of 38 Crabtree Road to the trustees of town donations for a term to expire April 30th, 2023. Connolly Ben of 747 Old Marlboro Road to fill the Republican seat on the Board of Registars for a term to expire April 30th, 2023. And Liza Bemis of 5 Grant Street to the Agricultural Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
Okay, let's see if Susan's back. I hear her voice. Okay, let's see if Susan's back. I hear her voice. Susan? All right, Jane, do you have a committee appointments?
Yes. Move to appoint Arthur Rogers of 30 Elsinore Road to the Cultural Council for a term to expire April 30th, 2023. Alan Coder of 19 Edgewood Road to the West Concord Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Will the, Jane, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Let's see, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And do we have Ms. Bates? Myself, Ms. Hotchkiss, aye.
Okay, thank you. And town manager appointments, motion?
Move to appoint the town manager appointments with select board approval. Andrea Oki of 112 Stone Root Lane to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023. Lloyd Price of 152 Holdenwood Road, Jean Goldsberry of 1832 Main Street, and Jennifer Brook of 31 Oxbo Road to the Commission on Disability for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023. Nancy Nelson of 1695 Lowell Road to the Historical Commission for a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Well, Jane, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Hotchkiss, aye.
And Susan's still, Ms. Bates, are you here? No, okay. Thank you. Committee liaison reports, who would like to go first? And if we can keep this brief and focus, also include vacancies if you're aware of them.
Okay.
Terry, are you going to be brief?
Yes, because I didn't have as many meetings as I did that other time. That was But I do have a question, actually, about the Capital Planning Task Force. I know that we voted to extend the terms of the people, but they're asking if we need to take another vote to change the charge.
So I asked Jeremy to check on that, and Jeremy indicated to me that, checking the minutes, that we did approve the charge and that that we didn't necessarily approve the terms of the committee. However, APP 10 says that people are in their seats through the end-of-town meeting. So that we can add that to the next agenda to extend their terms through June 30th.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Okay, so I have a few brief reports. The Ad Committee had a successful ad week. The new chair is Lise Holdorf. And there are two vacancies, however, we just appointed one tonight. So there's one more vacancy. The Library had a subcommittee that met to review the administrative code. You'll remember that this came up during the review of the public-private partnership. And the administrative code was last revised in 1997. They're going to tweak it and submit a draft to the Select Board for approval. And they've requested our help in seeking diversity for future applicants. It seems as though most of the applicants are middle-aged and senior white women, and they would like to get more men, more younger people, more people of color, et cetera. And then the other two things were the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee. The state budget is not done yet, but the state remains committed to keeping local aid as they promised for FY21. But there's a lot of concern now about FY22. And in terms of local contribution on the education formula, there's a call to seek wealthier communities contribute more. So that could affect us. And finally, well, we already, we already covered that. And then Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, they did a sidewalk on September 24th of the last half mile down from Powder Mill Road, past White Pond to the Sudbury Town Line. It's going to include an interpretive panel and fencing to protect the steep slopes toward the Vernal Pool and White Pond. And Marcia Rosmussen and her counterpart in Sudbury are coordinating and sharing information. And a select board member from Sudbury, Jane Drutler, has been participating in the Concord Rail Trail meetings. And finally, from the Rail Trail, we are going to get a request from the Bruce Freeman folks to amend their charge. Bedford has been building their rail trail up to the Concord Line, just north of Great Meadows off Route 62. And people are going to be able to bike from Cambridge all the way through Bedford to the Concord Line. And they would like to discuss with us a proposal to continue the rail trail all the way to our visitor center, providing more access and more economic vitality for us. So that's enough said about that. We'll be getting a letter of request, and they would like to be on our agenda.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
Okay, I was going to say, and that sounds like something will come up on a transportation discussion as well. I had a number of meetings. First of all, I wanted to compliment the town staff who've been working on White Pond, who continue to show their expertise in a further discussion of goals with Carmen, the Chair of our White Pond Advisory Committee. And I look forward to that being an even more productive movement forward or path forward. I had the Board of Health meeting on Wednesday, and that was interesting from a number of perspectives. One, they reviewed a subdivision of 48 Y Pittsburgh Turnpike, which, if none of you know, is a piece that would be otherwise, I guess, landlocked or wouldn't have an, wouldn't have access, frontage, that's just on the Concord Line of the subdivision that's going in off of 117 in Sudbury. Still not quite sure how we ended up with the public hearing to approve a paved road in that, that would have access through Sudbury. But that's moving forward. And it's just worthy of noting, since the entire subdivision will, I'm quite sure, have impact in a number of ways on Concord. And then, you know, as no one is surprised, we had a lengthy discussion of COVID-19, how the schools reopening has gone. I think that accolades are, you know, kudos to everyone. I think, once again, we have been, I won't call it lucky, because I think it's really a, the result of incredibly good planning and really impressive joint implementation on the town staff and the school staff and the department heads. That doesn't mean we don't need to stay vigilant, but so far, so good. And with a few, you know, a few cases, but that's also, I think we're experiencing far less than many of our fellow communities. The Board reelected Deb Green as their Chair. Then the Historic Districts Commission had a long discussion of one public hearing that hung up on size and citing, not surprising. This is, this is often the case with the Historic Districts Commission. But then we also had a long, there was a long discussion of the, at the end, of the expansion of their, of the historic districts to take on Jenny Dugan Road and the importance of that as a timeframe in architectural history, as well as a historic reference to a very important member of Concord's past. And there will be a site visit to the entire, the entire area to look at all of the deck houses and to review, you know, their significance and time. And with that, I will just be quiet.
Thank you, Jane. Susan?
I'm sorry, I
Well, welcome back.
My internet again. When's that 5G coming? Anyway, I went to the, and it's not Concord Broaddown. I can't get it here, so I can't blame, I wish I could. Council on Aging met. They're still looking for, there's a lot of turnover. There's three members in the pipeline, or one appointment, reapportment and two appointments in the pipeline. But in addition, they're looking for one full member, which is a three-year term, and two associate members, which are one-year terms, which are nice ways for people to get involved in the Council on Aging without making a three-year commitment. So I would encourage anyone who's interested to please send in a green card. They talked about, there's a drive-through food clinic scheduled. It's fully subscribed, 134 people, and that's coming up. Also, the building's not open yet, and so a lot of the programs are done through Zoom. But hopefully, we'll see how that, if that loosens up in the near future. Economic Vitality Committee met on the 30th. And we got an update on the Community Block Grant, which is the one that you could, businesses could apply for up to $10,000. It's a federal grant. There were five Concord applications that were awarded $47,500. Many more businesses were identified, but it's a fairly difficult application to complete. There will be a second round. The first round closed on the 25th of September. We're announcing a second round, and they may be including a projection of 2020 income, which would kind of be more relevant than 2019 for purposes of the impact of COVID. And then if, in addition to that, there is a third round. That would be open to all communities in the Commonwealth, not just the 24 that are involved in this aspect of it. There have been 30 grants given by the fund, the Community Chess Fund that Concord Together sponsored, but they have a lot more money. And that is a $2,500 max, but it's a much less difficult form to complete. So I'm urging here at this public meeting for businesses who haven't applied for that grant that that's rolling application. So please step up. The discussion, Steve recovered some of this about putting up early decorations. And the other ideas they talked about were maybe doing short videos, a montage of Concord businesses. Erin Stevens was there at the meeting, our information officer, and she contributed some thoughts on that. And hence, the idea of a Concord Commercial REIT, R E I T, Real Estate Investment Trust, was brought up by John Boynton, just as a, what do you, you know, what about this? The idea behind it being as commercial real estate turns over in Concord, doesn't happen very often, but it's, there are several examples of it being bought by someone by not a local person. One building was bought by someone from Newton, but that corner where the toy shop used to be, the Walden and Main Street corner, that building was purchased by a real estate company that owns malls all over the country. So the concern was that the further removed the owners are from the town, the more they'll perhaps not acknowledge the character of the town and what we think is important. So if anybody, that was just a beginning conversation on that idea, which I'm sure there'll be more to follow. The Trails Committee, I came in in the middle of what Terry was saying, but it sounds like there was, there was someone there. It was the gentleman who's the co-chair of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, who was talking about the reformatory branch is the trail that continues where the Bedford Line ends. And the suggestion was that the, they wanted, as she said, to change the charge of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to encompass conversation, development of that idea. What are we going to do? What's best for the town? There's the trail that connects the Battle Road, on the Battle Road to Throw Birthplace, is looking for funding sources, because it's a, that's what's needed at this point. That's it for Trails. Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee met on the 22nd, and they, it was a fairly routine meeting, going over what's needed to wrap up conservation, the reports or whatever that are needed on various conservation plots. They also had a presentation by Ben Griffiths, who's the GIS technician on the new GIS monitoring, which they will be able to incorporate into the stewardship, into the work that they do. Board of Assessors met on the 24th. They, overall, they, I had a note they need a member, but I see that one was appointed here. So they have worked hard. They're working on values. Land values are basically flat. There are a couple of decreases, and there's a couple of increases based on activity. And this is, you know, the base is the sales ending on December 31, 1999. This hasn't happened for a couple, for many years, that the, and also house values are mostly down. There are a few types of houses where the values have gone up. Tom Matthews was reelected as Chair to the committee, and the assessor said the inspections are being done. They have an offer for a new clerk in the department that needs to be processed by HR. And they're hoping to submit values, property values, to the Department of Revenue the week after next, which is actually pretty soon. And then the Planning Board met on the 22nd. They covered a lot of the, they did say, I don't know if anyone mentioned this before, that the state is taking back the grant we received for Crosstown Connect. Did any, I don't know if anyone else had that reported. And about the Jenny Dugan Neighborhood that's working with HCC to establish a new historic district. They're talking about just some language in the tree preservation bylaw. And it for that. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Matt?
Sure, I attended the Recreation Commission meeting, and there we met the new recreation directors that are working in the after-school programs that are now co-located with the schools. And there, those programs are actually very successful and are actually bringing in revenue that is offsetting revenue that's been lost in other areas. So that's really a very bright spot in an otherwise somewhat grim picture. The other thing to note is that the group elected Casey Atkins as interim chair. She's not the long-term chair, but is sitting in for that for now. That the commission also agreed to send a letter recommending the CPC application for the flagpole at Emerson Fields being renovated. And then there was renovated. Um, and then there was some more extensive discussion of the BD Center. Um, first of all, how, you know, it has had, of course, some decline in memberships, uh, but that it does still, you know, getting some. And then the, there is a, um, whole longer-term question, given the way that the, uh, fund is set up for BD, um, how to go about a, a capital program in the future. Uh, just because, you know, the facility is now aged enough that there will be some major capital expenses on the horizon, and so there was some, uh, discussion of that, and I'll come back later, I'm sure, with more on that. Uh, then, uh, the NMI Star Met, uh, Committee met, and the big focus of the meeting really was on the content of the report that the Committee members are authoring, um, and that they hope to have wrapped up by March, uh, for us to review. Um, so that, that's going to be a long process, a lot of great thinking, and of course, there was a review of our site visit, and all, very well-regarded throughout. Then I attended the PEG Access Advisory Committee meeting. Uh, Carlin Reed was, uh, reappointed Chair, reelected Chair, I should say. Ruth Lauer is Clerk. Um, they're down two members. Um, and then, uh, there was a lot of discussion really about, uh, the scope of the Committee's activities, and of course, changes as a result of COVID. Um, and so, you know, I, that's why in our goals, I've proposed that perhaps even though they came before the Select Board as recently as last November, kind of the world has changed since then, uh, that, uh, we really perhaps need to take a, a new look, um, just at, at that Committee's charge. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, I think I'm last, I'll be quick. Um, I attended the Tax Fairness Committee meeting. They, um, their main focus is, um, now getting Article 15 that was passed at town meeting to the attention of our legislatures, uh, for, for, um, special legislative action. They need one, um, member at this point, so anyone who's interested in working with them, they would appreciate it. And I'm just going to make a shout out to anyone who's still listening, um, that, um, you could hear a number of vacancies with our liaison reports tonight. So if you are available to help us on these committees, please get your green cards in. Um, all right. Um, so thank you, everyone, for those liaison reports. Uh, miscellaneous correspondence?
Linda, um, can I just ask a question? Um, I, uh, when Susan was speaking, Susan, did you say the state is taking back the grant for the Crosstown Connect? What, what happened?
We didn't, can I, I can, yeah. Um, we didn't, I, I, we're not going to meet our completion date. Um, I think that's part of this. I, I don't think that's unique to us. I think the state has climbed back resources, given their revenue shortfalls. Um, and I think that the purpose of it has been somewhat nullified, because it was really a study to increase access, access with the rail stations being a hub, and really ridership is so far down that, you know, there's, there's an air of unpredictability. So I think when things return to normal, commuting patterns resume, I think we would go back to that and probably restart that.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't something on our end that we did wrong. It just was.
Yeah.
We didn't get started, and for obvious reasons, and I think they're clawing back a lot of grants that, that didn't get started yet.
Okay, thank you. Miscellaneous correspondence. Um, I've received miscellaneous correspondence and Select Board has, uh, related to Esterbrook Woods. Um, and some of it is in today's, uh, packet, and some of it is, I'm just noting at this point. Um, are there any public comments? All right, see, none, then I would-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Linda?
Yes?
It's Carlin Reed. Um, I'm sorry, but I didn't catch it. What is the date for town meeting?
Okay, will you, um, Carlin Reed, just state your address again?
My apologies. It's Carlin Reed, 83 Witsand, and the question is, what's the new date for town meeting?
The new date for town meeting is, um, June 13th, Sunday afternoon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Linda?
Yes, Tanya.
Yeah, Tanya Gailis, 62 Prescott Road. Um, I would like to ask our Town Manager some questions regarding the Town, uh, the Transportation Committee, but before that, I wanted to mention, um, that some of the documents you were discussing, like the, um, whether it's the town meeting date or the goals of the Select Board, the, the most recent drafts that you were talking about was not online, so the public could not necessarily follow everything accurately. I may also write to you some other thoughts, but, uh, about the Transportation Advisory Committee, as you know, I did send a letter about my correspondence with the Attorney General's Office about whether it is or it's not a public body. Um, so, uh, I appreciate that the next meeting is posted and, uh, will be joinable by Zoom, but I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Crane if, if, um, the recording of the first meeting is available, if a recording of this upcoming meeting will be available, and also whether he would agree that it is a public body or not? If he would, uh, he would, if he would care to answer.
Okay, so, um, thank, thank you for your questions.
Okay, you, you're, okay, thank you. So he, he would, would, would he care to answer, or?
I, I'm not sure that during public comment, I'll defer to the Chair. Um, but I, I think I, I did receive your correspondence. We have a disagreement about this, but I, I'm not sure anything I'm going to say is going to satisfy that disagreement, but I, um, again, I answered the second one easy, that there, there was not a recording of the first meeting.
Can draft minutes be available?
Uh, I, sure, I mean, we can try and put something together.
I mean, one, one thing we do agree about.
I, 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 Tanya, I'm sorry.
All right.
I've reported, I've reported on why the first meeting ended up happening the way it did. Um, and so I, I know you, I, I know you disagree, but I, I've reported on that already.
Well, I will have to, as, as you know, the Attorney General said that the only way to ascertain whether this is a public body or not would be an open meeting law complaint, and I may have to do that. That's why I'm asking you. Just, you know, that is why I, I'm being transparent. Uh, so that is why I, I need to know that this will be a public body, otherwise it is, I, I did ask them. They said the only way to find out is a formal complaint, so I will take that course.
So I, I, I did read your correspondence, what you sent, Tanya, and I, quite honestly, I think the work of the Committee could, could fall under either category.
Okay, so I will have to file a complaint to find out for sure. Thank you.
All right. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Actually, Linda, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mary. Uh, you want to state your name and address?
My name is Mary Hartman, 16 Concord Green. Um, I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. Um, I have a simple question. Um, can you tell me who is the Select Board Liaison to the Finance Committee? I didn't hear a liaison report, and I'm wondering, who is our, who is our liaison? I'd like to-
I am.
You are. Great. Good. Thank you.
And then we talked about, uh, we approved that liaison list at the last Select Board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I was at your meeting last Thursday evening.
Oh, really? Okay, good. I missed you. Sorry.
All right. Um, any other comments from the public? All right, um, may I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Is the clerk with us to call the roll?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Good night, everyone, and thank you very much.
You too.
Good night.